I'm going to call the October 20th meeting of the West Des Moines City Council to order and invite you all to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
All right, hello everybody, please sign in. Ryan, have there been any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Your Honor.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as distributed?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, we are going to move on to Citizens Forum. Anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the council on any item that is not either part of public hearing or new business, that's item six or seven in your agenda, please come to the podium here, give us your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep it civil and respectful and a maximum of five minutes. Is there anybody that would like to address the council for Citizens Forum? Okay, is there anybody online that would like to address the council on Citizens Forum? Please hit star six to unmute yourself. Again, star six, not pound six. Okay, hearing and seeing no one either in the chamber or online, Citizens Forum is closed. We're going to move on to item three, Mayor Council Manager Report and Other Entities Update. And I will start with our awesome city manager, Tom Hadden.
No report, Your Honor.
That's why he's awesome. He's always short and sweet, to the point. Okay, moving on to Councilman Hudson.
I really enjoyed city manager Hadden's report, so I will echo that report.
Let's keep it going, all right. Councilman McKinney.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Holy cow, what's going on? Councilwoman Hardman.
I'm afraid to speak.
There we go, there we go. Somebody had to blow it.
I'm not following the norm here, I'm sorry. But I'm going to just say it, keep it brief. I just want to thank the Jordan House Foundation for putting together a wonderful 167 5th Jubilee Festival out in front of the Jordan House. It was wonderful, well attended, lots of family activities for the youth and home apple cider that you can make yourself, best apple cider I've ever had in my life. And so, want to thank them for such a wonderful, wonderful occasion. I think Park &amp; Recs partner with them to also ensure the success of this particular event. I also attended the West Des Moines Chamber Foundation Meeting, and they are progressing. They have all the legal work now that they are an official foundation with the right federal designations, EIN number and all of that. So they're making progress and this will allow them to really pursue building that foundation. So I'm proud of the work that Catherine and the team have done in that area. And then, I did also have a Human Rights Commission meeting last week, so they are underway trying to figure out the kinds of things that they can do and still lift up information that's important to our citizens. And then lastly, there were a number of city council members that attended the Human Services Affair. You know, it changed from the Steakhouse to Stein Barn and more of an informal setting. And Audrey did such a wonderful job explaining what they do, their impact on the community, and the partnerships that they have with the public-private partnership is what makes it works. And I think they raised about $40,000 for that event. So kudos to the Human Services Department for thinking out of the box, doing something different, and raising awareness for the work that they do in that area. Brief enough, I hope.
That was great, Councilwoman, that was awesome. Okay, moving on to Councilman Trevillion.
The only thing I want to say is for everybody in person and online is that remember, in two weeks, November 4th, is city elections. And there's four of us up for election this time, the mayor, Renee, myself, and Doug. City politics is the, really the most important, in my opinion, to vote on because that is what really the voters have the biggest say in. And we represent all of you, not a political party, it's a nonpartisan race. So get out and vote and let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lotes.
You stole my thunder, Councilman Trevillion, so nothing else to report, Your Honor.
Well, I would just, I would just add one thing very briefly, and that is, I was unable to attend our West Des Moines Human Services Advisory Board fundraiser, which I was bummed out that I couldn't make it there, but it was for a good reason because I was accepting an award on behalf of the city from Habitat for Humanity, of our key award for our housing programs that we started up. And it was a huge honor to be there, to be able to accept the award on behalf of the city and the great work that we've all done collectively on affordable housing. With me was Jenny Rowe from Economic Development, Ryan Moffett, as well as Christine Gordon. And it was a wonderful night, and like I said, it really made me proud to accept that award on behalf of all of us and the work that we've all done in affordable housing. So with that, absolutely, I just hated to miss you all at Human Services, but with that, we'll move on.
Kevin had a drink in his state.
Okay, well, thank you, Kevin, for representing, appreciate it.
That was a great event, yes.
All right, moving on to item four, consent agenda. We are going to poll the following items. We're going to poll item 4C6, item 4C7. Okay, 4C6 and 7, liquor licenses for come and go. And we are also going to poll item 4P2, because we've got some people here for the National Family Literacy Day. Are there any other items that any councilperson would like to have polled on and voted separately? Otherwise, I take them.
Move for the remainder?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, moving on to item 4C6, Come and Go LC, Doing Businesses Maverick, number 5287, 220 50th Street, Class E Retail Alcohol License, it's renewal. Does somebody want to move?
Motion to move?
Yes, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Four yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, item 4C7 is also Come and Go LC, Doing Businesses Maverick, number 5364.
Motion to approve?
Okay.
Second.
Short form, I've been short formed, okay. This is moved and seconded, please vote.
For yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, now we'll move on to item 4P2. Like I said, it's a National Family Literacy Day, celebrating November 1st.
Motion to approve.
Okay, this is moved, is there any seconds? Moved and seconded, and I will read. Whereas National Family Literacy Day, established by the 103rd Congress in 1994 and now making its 31st anniversary on November 1st, 2025, highlights the importance of reading and learning for the entire family and emphasizes the impact that parents have on their child's learning. And whereas this day is celebrated across America each year and focuses on special activities and events that showcase the importance of family literacy programs that empower families and build a nation of readers, and whereas literacy programs across the United States will observe National Family Literacy Day by holding Read-a-Thons, book drives, workshops, and family activities at schools, libraries, and community centers to encourage literacy. And whereas as many as one in six adults struggle with reading and writing, and by learning to read, individuals can gain self-respect and confidence and strive towards goals that otherwise would not be achievable. And whereas the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, nonpolitical volunteer women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children and adults. And whereas education being one of the cornerstones of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is committed to increasing literacy by promoting and supporting literacy programs. Now, therefore, I, Russ Trimble, Mayor of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2025, as National Family Literacy Day in the city of West Des Moines. To underscore the importance of literacy, celebrate the joy of reading, encourage residents, I encourage residents to promote literacy by reading together as a family and to extend deep appreciation to our local librarians, educators, and literacy service providers for their tireless efforts to strengthen the literacy of our children and our community. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, if the people that are here for this would like to join me, the council city manager, down in front, we're going to present you the proclamation and we'll take a picture. annexation. We have a motion to withdraw consideration of the 80/20 voluntary annexation as originally proposed, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 5B, Riverview Drive and South 81st Street Extension. We've got a resolution for approval, the construction contract to extend Riverview Drive and South 81st Street, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move for approval.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, please vote. Okay, item 5C, approval of the Ruthenium Tax Increment Finance District, city initiated. We've got an ordinance for approval, the second reading, waiver, the third reading, and adoption of final form. There are no changes from the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council at our last meeting, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to consider, second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the dais? I mean, I guess I would just say that I really appreciate Microsoft's continued investment in our community. This is taking action, moving forward on the sixth data center in West Des Moines. And it's a huge deal to be able to have Microsoft here and 600 some odd jobs that are associated currently with these data centers, as well as hundreds, if not thousands, of temporary construction jobs that have been going on continuously since about 2008. So, all right, any other discussion? Okay, please vote.
For yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest. An ordinance providing the general property taxes levied and collected each year on all taxable property located within the Ruthenium Urban Renewal Area in the city of West Des Moines be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans. Money is advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Ruthenium Urban Renewal Area.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
For yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Motion to waive third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
Please vote.
For yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, item 5D, approval of traffic code amendment through street stops required, Southeast 25th Street, Veterans Parkway to Southern Terminus. We have again got an ordinance amendment for approval, the second reading, waiver, third reading, adoption, and final form. There are no changes from the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council at our last meeting, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move consideration of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes, an ordinance amended the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024 by many provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Move to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 5E, we've got approval of traffic code amendment, special stops required, Southeast Beaverbrook Trail and Southeast Fox Valley Drive, Southeast Gross Break Point, and Southeast Creek Hill Way. We've once again got an ordinance amendment for approval, the second reading, waiver, the third, and adoption of final form. There are no changes in the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council at the last meeting, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to consider, second reading.
Is there a second? Okay, it's moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes, an ordinance amended the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024 by many provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Motion to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 5F, approval of traffic code amendment, no parking zones, Southeast 25th Street, Veterans Parkway to Southern Terminus on the west side. We've once again got an ordinance amendment of approval, the second reading, waiver, the third, adoption, and final form. There are no, there are no changes from the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council at the last meeting, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move consideration of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes, an ordinance amended the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024 by many provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Move to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 5G, approval of traffic code amendment, special speed zones, Southeast 25th Street to Veterans Parkway to Southern Terminus. And this is going to seem familiar to you, we've once again got an ordinance amendment for approval, the second reading, waiver, the third reading, adoption, and final form. There are no changes to the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council at the last meeting, and there are also no outstanding issues.
Motion to consider a second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes, an ordinance amended the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024 by many provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Motion to approve, the second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 6, public hearings, item 6A, this is time and place for a public hearing to consider amendment number three, the University Avenue Corridor, Urban Renewal Area initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
October 10th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6A, please come to the podium here, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on item 6A? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We've got a resolution for approval of amendment to the urban renewal plan, and there are no outstanding issues. Somebody want to move approval of the resolution?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, please vote. Okay, item 6B, this is time and place for a public hearing to consider Valley West Urban Renewal Area initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
October 10th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6B, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six, to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody in the chamber or online that would like to address council on item Okay, once again, hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We've got a resolution for approval of the urban renewal plan, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion for approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the dais? I will just say that I'm really excited to move the ball forward on this thing. This is going to be an incredible project, once we're able to work this all out and move it forward. I think that it's going to be, I think the public is really excited to see the plans. And I hope that they are as excited about this as we are. This will be a great redevelopment in part of our city that really needs to be redeveloped. Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 6C, this is time and place for a public hearing to consider conveyance of city-owned property to Polk County Conservation Board and reservation of public easements for the Raccoon River Greenway boat access initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
October 15th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6C, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Does anybody want to address the council on item 6C? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We've got approval of the conveyance of property interest and reservation of permanent easements, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 7, new business, item 7A, proceed with current construction access design, Ashworth Road, 19th Street to 23rd Street. We've got a motion to proceed with the current construction access, a design of Ashworth, and there are no outstanding issues. Does somebody want to move approval of the motion?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? Okay, Shane, come on up, give us your name and address for the record. And we ask that you keep it to five minutes or less. Go ahead, Shane.
Shane McClintock, 1910 Ashworth Road. Really was hoping I wouldn't have to come here again, but anyway, on this plan, if you look at the plan, I'm one of those that's designated as a zero, which basically means for two to four months, our family will not have safe access to our property during this reconstruction process. A couple of doors down, those who are deemed stars on the plan, they get access for, their driveway access won't be limited for more than two to three days. So what I'm asking for, what I would like the council to encourage is for engineering, they have the technology, other modern cities do this, and they allow temporary access to all of those, all of their citizens, all of their homeowners along there, not just a few. They don't pick out a few and say, you get it for two to four days, and you get no access for two to four months. So my main concerns for this, though, it's not just out of convenience, but I'm concerned for the safety of our family, not having driveway access, not being able to take my car and park it in the garage and transfer my mother-in-law, my mother, in their 70s or their 80s, when in the spring, there's going to be black ice in the driveways. I saw a patient this morning, and she's only 31 years old. She fractured her ankle, and her life is still affected because of this fracture from falling on the ice. This is not an if it's going to happen, it's when it will happen. And yes, the risk might be low, but not too long ago, we were concerned, and we made decisions in this council to widen this road out of concern for property damage to clipped mirrors because the road is too narrow. So I would hope that we'd put the same value to the people, because frankly, a fall on black ice, because I can't transfer safely into our garage, or again, my, the elderly, or there are people along this route who will have an infant for four months, they will have an infant and three other kids, that they will not be able to take their car into their garage and transfer that infant safely in there. That's not right, that's not right to do that, when there is the ability to provide temporary access. We realize you're going to have to restrict it for a few days. We realize we're not going to get it the whole time, and we can work around that, okay? But two to four months is excessive, is prolonged, and it just, it just doesn't seem right to put those risks onto us. Because again, if my mother-in-law falls, we're talking about one in three elderly individuals who fall typically will break their hip. The rest of their lives are affected. They can't see their grandchildren much because usually they die early, or they're disabled for the rest of their lives. So just one of those instances, are we willing to impose that risk on the community? Can we do better? I would like to think that we can do better. We also work from our home. We have two offices inside of our home. I transfer on a regular basis, very sensitive, very expensive equipment, and I can only do that inside my garage, into my home office, and back. Just this week, I've done that three times since Wednesday, okay? I'm talking 75-pound force plates, very sensitive motion capture equipment, cameras that I can't transfer in the rain, okay? And if I do, and I drop that, I mean, we're talking thousands of dollars that only I am responsible for at that time. So this disrupts not only the safety to our family, this disrupts our ability to work from our home, okay? I mean, it's very essential for us to have driveway access for all of those purposes. So this robs us of the ability for us to use and enjoy our homes, okay? And it's again, only a selected few. It's only the zeros here that I would like to advocate for, and I would hope that you would advocate for that. So, the last thing I'll just say, like I said, it's deeply concerning me that this project was justified in part to prevent minor vehicle damage such as clipped mirrors, yet the same level of concern is not, does not seem to be extended to the health and the safety and the daily functioning of homeowners who cannot safely or reasonably access or use their property, our garages particularly, like we normally do. So I think this is an opportunity to show that West Des Moines values property rights and safety for its residents just as much as efficiency for projects. I understand we want to get this done quickly, but can we please protect the zeros on the map and not just the stars? Okay, so I hope you will please support safety and property rights of West Des Moines homeowners and encourage reasonable temporary access during the property construction. Did I make it?
You're good, you had 49 seconds left, you sure you don't want to keep going?
Well, if you guys, I'm happy to answer questions or collaborate, you know, it's...
Appreciate it. Are there any questions at all for Shane?
No, but I haven't got comments.
Actually, I had a question for Shane, too. We had talked earlier, and you were just chatting about the neighbors have been in contact with one another, right? I was just curious if, if all of the neighbors, and I'm not expecting that you've talked to every single person along Ashworth, that's not what I'm suggesting here, but do you think the neighbors are willing to, how best to put it, like share driveways during this time in terms of whether it be cutting across, even if it's private property and the city has nothing to do with it, or just sharing a spot on the driveway? That's kind of my question. And there's, there's a couple of different things under that umbrella of how can a neighbor help? And so that's kind of my question, have you spoken to other neighbors about that?
Well, the neighbors I'm adjacent to that are on the south side, we have spoken about this, and yes, we are all in agreement that, you know, we would help each other out in this, to make this more feasible, more reasonable, and to allow us to be safe. And again, I know the Tomatskis, they wanted to be here, he said he'd be here about 6:10, but you guys are moving fast tonight. But, but again, they, I mean, again, she has a, I don't want to tell their whole health story, but they have serious, they have serious health issues, too. So I know that some of the accessibility decisions were made based on this person needs accessibility, and they were made a star, but I'm telling you, there is risk to every person who looks like us in this room that aren't being considered in there. But yes, we are willing to collaborate. Hey, there they are. We are willing, and they can speak for themselves, but we've spoken, we're willing to do that. But we, I guess we feel like the safest way to do this is for city to be in charge of that, for them to make the temporary access, to do it the right way so that vehicles can safely get in through there, and then to reconcile it at the end and plant some sod down, which is what, again, when they do temporary access plans, from what I understand in other areas, that's kind of what they do. They give them temporary access and they fix, you know, what they had to do afterwards. So, yeah, we would absolutely open that.
Okay, are there any other questions for Shane?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else that would like to address the council on this item, come on up, give us your name and address, five minutes or less, civil and respectful, you know the rules. Go ahead.
My name is Darren Gerhardt, I live at 2110 Ashworth Road. I am one of the zeros. As he said, most of us on the south side, both, most of us have two entrances on our driveways. And as a disabled veteran, I'm not going to be able to walk, you know, 100 yards, 150 yards with a bunch of groceries all the time, especially for two to four months. My girlfriend is a physician assistant, she gets called out at all hours of the night sometimes. She's not going to be able to do that as well and be safe getting out there as well. A lot of you, some of you may know, some of you may not know, I was also a land development vice president... vice president for one of the largest home builders in the United States. This can be done with temporary access. It doesn't have to be hard pack or anything else, it could be gravel where we can get in and out of our driveways. And they can dig it up, they can do their work, they can put it back, you know, pound it in with the backhoe, just to give us access for that day. I know it's a pain, the logistics on this road stink. I do not envy Brian or anybody else working on this, especially for as long as they've been working on it, but you can't expect us two to four months not to have access to our house. That's absolutely ridiculous. And honestly, as a project manager, I know it can be done. I've done it before in many places, in Las Vegas, I've done it in Atlanta, and I've also done it in Tallahassee, Florida. And I know it can be done. These things just, I hate to say it, take time and money. And I know timing is probably the worst thing of this actual mess, but, you know, honestly, with this whole area of putting in new water pipes on each side of us and then leaving us with the old ductile iron in between, it's cost me over $6,000 in fixtures in my house. We need to get this done as fast as possible. Between washers, hot water heaters, and now doing my water filtration system, it's cost me over $6,000. It's starting to dig into my pockets a little more.
Well, I apologize for that. You do realize we are not part of the Water Works organization, right?
No, I understand that.
Because a lot of people, I'm just saying, because a lot of people don't. We get that a lot, you know, what are you doing for clean water? There's a Water Works organization that has West Des Moines, West Des Moines in their name, but that's not a city organization.
No, I've called them to flush the hydrants at 21st Street. It took them over an hour to get the rust out of the line.
And I can't take accountability for them.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, we need to get it done because it's, I mean, I've done a lot of remodeling to my house, and now I have to do it again because it's turning in my fixtures.
Sure, I'm sorry to hear that. Okay, anything else?
No.
No, okay, thank you so much. Is there anybody else?
I think I have a question. He was saying, I've done this before, I've done this here. Done what?
I've done project management for land development, roadworks, for Beazer Homes, D.R. Horton, and Lennar. I was the land development, uh, land development vice president and manager. So I've done the coordination, the undergrounds, the, the roadworks, everything. I, I know it sucks.
Sure, but what you're talking about is developing of homes where people are not necessarily living. This is a public roadway that's a pretty busy, major arterial. I mean, I hear what you're saying, there are some similarities, is what you're saying.
Well, I, I've actually done it where we've had to take over a subdivision where we've had to actually dig up the roadway and, and redo all the waterworks and underground utilities and everything else. So we've had to, I've actually physically had to do that and be out on site. So I'm not saying I've done the size of Ashworth, but I've done something similar.
I got you.
And just a small part that I did, it took five and a half months, I was pulling my hair out. I don't know how everybody has color in their hair here, I just, I don't get it. I, I don't, I don't envy you guys at all.
I don't envy us either. Thank you so much. All right, anybody else who'd like to address the council on this item? All right, if you could, give us your name and address for the record.
Kyle Frizzell, I live at 1160 21st Street. Live in the same neighborhood, have been friends with the McClintons for years, and, you know, Ashworth has been messy for a long time. It sucks taking land from citizens to do the work. I understand trying to move traffic, I don't like traffic either. I like a safe driving place for my kids, my family, my friends, but taking away access to somebody's home for two to four months is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. And if you would continue with that plan, would the city engineer that supports it and everyone on the council and the mayor also park 150 yards from your home for the same amount of time that they can't access their home? Yes, no? I'm guessing you're all going to tell me no.
If, if we had to do that, yes, we would do that. There have been other citizens that have had to do that as well. I mean, I've been on the council for 16 years.
If you take away the zeros access for two to four months, would you also walk 150 yards to your home for the same amount of time? Whether you could or not?
The same amount of time? It would take me longer, and I wouldn't like it at all, but it would be an unfortunate reality of the construction project.
Right, but I'm asking for pretty citizens.
What he's saying about is during this project, would we, even though we've got concrete up to our house, would we be willing to park 150 yards away from our house and walk in all weather, carrying whatever it might be, kids, packages, groceries, whatever? Would we be willing to walk that while this project's underway? That's what he's asking, correct?
Yes. Push a stroller with infants.
We wouldn't have a choice.
No, he's, Russ, he's not talking, he's not talking about if your road was torn up. He's saying that you've got your street there while Ashworth's going on, we all do. Would we be willing to park 150 feet away, not use that concrete street while Ashworth Road is being done? Would you be willing to do that if you take away their access?
Sure.
You'll park 150 feet?
I would, but what's the point of it? This is something that's a necessity, unfortunately. We're trying to work with residents to have as...
Other options.
As little inconvenience as possible during the project. You know, unfortunately, we've done a lot of construction projects over the last 16 years, Kevin, that you and I have been on the council, and what you have to try to do is be fair and just across the city, and what you do for somebody, one person, you have to be willing to do for somebody else. And I don't believe that we've ever been asked to make these kind of accommodations before. We do the best that we can, and we try to expedite the construction project, but have we had residents walking to their homes? Yes, we have. We've had that, we just had that happening, Kevin, in your ward and on Giles.
I know, and it, it's not good.
It's not good.
We need, and that's what I'm going to talk about during my comments.
It's not, it's not great, but it's, it's, it's just one of the things that happens when we have to do a construction project, unfortunately. We try to limit this to the extent possible, but this has happened time and time again, and we have to be fair and just and also pay attention to the use of taxpayer dollars and do what makes the most sense. But I think there is an option here, and I think Councilman McKinney talked about it, and that is the residents getting together and agreeing to be able to use one another's property. There's a lot of cement because they have the circular driveways, and so if the residents want to get together and agree that they can use each other's property and drive across it, if that's something that the residents agree to do, that's fine by me.
Providing...
It sounds, it sounds like, it sounds like the residents are willing to do that.
But providing reasonable access.
This, that's, that's exactly what we're doing, and I'm going to bring my city engineer up when we're, when we're done. Yes.
But it, but it, it sounds like, no, you would not be willing to do that as a council. That's what I'm hearing.
If this was my street, are you saying that when they're doing it, I'm going to do it with them?
Yes.
I mean, that, that doesn't make any sense. I could do that with them.
Neither does, neither does take away access to their home for two to four months.
We're doing the street, and we're doing construction in front of their house, and unfortunately, that's just the reality of the construction.
But providing reasonable, safe access for not two to four months should be an option.
And I think this is reasonable, safe access, and I think if they want to work together as neighbors to drive across each other's property, I'm fine with that, and it sounds like that's something that they all want to do.
But I think the citizens and you have a different reasoning of what reasonable access is for that period of time, for that extended period of time.
I guess it depends on what your definition of reasonable access is.
You're, we do not have the same reasonable opinion, it sounds like.
What's your definition of reasonable access? Being able to pull into your garage?
Two to three days, yes, being able to access a driveway that's close to yours. You know, it's providing gravel access to one or two driveways a couple down, being able to get through the yard, but having to go 150 yards, you know, for that number of people and, and the elderly, or transporting infants and toddlers, no, not reasonable.
It's, it's horrible. It's not something that you want to have happen, we don't want to have that happen, it's just the reality of the construction project, and I think we're trying to make every accommodation that we reasonably can to make sure that people can get to their homes. We're trying to expedite the process that we're doing the construction project under. That's the reason we're trying to get it done as fast as possible, to have people out of their homes for as little time as possible, walking. But we've got to be fair and reasonable across the city, and I don't think we've ever taken heroic efforts and spent 200 some odd thousand extra of taxpayer dollars so that people can have access to their garages. I mean, it didn't happen on Giles, and it hasn't happened on a lot of other places around the city. It's not great, and it's nothing that any of us love, but we have to be fair and reasonable across the entire city on what we do, and we've got to be reasonable with the expenditure of taxpayer dollars. Anybody else have any questions?
I've got comments, you ready for those?
Sure, thank you, thank you. Sure, all right. Well, let's, let's wait, Kevin, till we get all the comments.
That's fine.
Okay, somebody online want to address the council on this item? Please, okay, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lori Young, and I live at 2000 Ashworth.
Okay, go ahead, Lori.
If you be a little less combative to the folk, I think you would see, we can, we can figure out the access, and we can do it by the exact phases as the project is set. The question is, is this area where we'd be driving would be by the current sidewalk? It is within the area that y'all have promised to rehabilitate on the contracts that we have? Shouldn't we just say that you'll help with that as well? The afterwards, not the during part, the after part? Because they're going to come in there and have to pour new driveways there anyway. That's already in the plan, and that, and that rental property they're giving us, that that's part of that contract, the place we'd be driving is within that easement. So it's already on the docket for repair. So the question is, if we can do, I don't want to hold Parkway all the way down Ashworth, we're just talking about two or three neighbors at a time, from the stars to the zeros, right? And so the idea is, it's within the, the land that y'all have committed to rehabitat and resaw and all that stuff. So what's so wrong about compaction? You know you're going to fix the compaction anyway from all the construction trucks.
She's ready?
That was my question. So it's not new cost to you? It's saying, hey, because normally it's not right to drive over everyone's yards, hey, can we make these arrangements, and can we work with our neighbors? And when you come back and rehab this street, it's going to be, well, you're going to have to be, you have to replace all those driveways, it's asking, hey, can we redo this, can we make these aways here? I don't see what's so hard about that. additional driving we done was access wasn't provided. We're, we'll provide on our own, just keep your promise to fix an area up.
Okay, anything else?
Nope. You have any questions to make?
Any questions for Lori?
Lori, I think our city engineer will share probably some answers here in a little while, he's going to come up and, because I think all of us have some questions, and I think he can help provide some answers, so thank you so much for your comment, Lori.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Anybody else? All right, come on up, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Tomuski, 1920 Ashworth Road. I just want to express my feelings about the, everything what was said before, and I just want to support that to block the access to the house for, from two, for two, four months like it's shown on, on the plan, on the plan. It seems not reasonable, and as an engineer, I don't understand why the project should go so long and why it cannot be made by phases. Phases that access could be provided, or reasonable access to be provided. I understand that we have to, to, that it will be inconvenient for everybody, but we are ready probably to struggle, but where is the reason? Why, why such kind of reason if it can be done by project management or project planning? That is it.
Any questions at all? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, anybody else that would like to address the council on this item? Okay, at this time, okay, go ahead.
Hello?
Yep, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brad Morford, 1815 Ashworth Road. Question that I have, a number of city projects that I recall go much longer than the city anticipates. What comes to mind is the bridge that was going across the interstate out on Ashworth, which took months longer than the original sign that was posted. Is there any backup plan? I mean, two, two months is one thing, four months is another, but when four months turns into six, that's entirely a different situation. I feel like there's about four houses on Ashworth Road that are really taking the brunt of the abuse for the rest of the people's good in the city, and I think the city needs to certainly do everything they can to accommodate them, but that's just my point.
Okay, thank you, Brad. Okay, let's call our city engineer, Brian Hemseth, up. Brian, if you want to show us what we're talking about, talk a little bit about the project, where people are going to be, where they're going to have access, where they're going to be walking to.
The timeframe.
Timeframes and all those details. Can you put that on the screen, Brian?
Or at least show, because I don't think our drawings show where the parking is going to be.
Sure, Brian Hemseth, city engineer. I've got, I didn't bring every phase of, of the project. This is one of the phases, this is actually phase, I believe, two A and two B.
Yep.
So what the plan is here is the, the road will be closed here, and then it's off the screen, but it's on the, down by 22nd Street, so there'll be no through traffic on the road at all, so people will be able to access, access the areas that are, aren't closed by the project itself. So folks in this area would be able to park directly on Ashworth and walk on, we're going to leave the sidewalk as it is. There are other parts where we aren't going to be able to leave the sidewalk, or we're going to have to provide some temporary modular sidewalks in areas across grass. Those are, but, but for the most part, the, the sidewalks will be left, so people will be able to walk up driveways, on the sidewalks, on concrete during the duration of, of that phase. So that, that's, this is just...
So show us more directly, like, show us, for example, where Shane, where's, where's your house on this map?
Shane's here.
Right there? Okay, so show us where is Shane going to park, and how far is Shane going to be walking?
Shane, Shane would park here.
Okay.
And the distance...
In one of the, one of the hatched out areas, right? Not necessarily, and they're not assigned.
Correct.
Is there any guarantee that you won't have construction people parking there? Any guarantee?
There is a guarantee there will not be construction people parking there, or we'll move them.
Okay, so...
Okay, so they'll park in the, in the hash spots?
These are slots that are made for folks that are displaced with their parking?
Those are, those are some of the spots. I mean, it's, it's illustrative, it doesn't mean that we're going to have just six or seven spots there, so it's, it's not to scale in particular, so there, there will be enough spots for folks that are displaced.
And so this is a walking path, that brown line there, right here? What is that made of?
It's the sidewalk, it's the current sidewalk.
Current sidewalk.
And we won't, we won't remove the sidewalk.
Okay.
So Shane is going to have to walk basically two houses, three houses?
It's, it's approximately 225 feet.
But it's like he's going to park by where this road closed sign is, basically, let's just say, so he'll have to walk by the one where the sidewalk closed sign is on that house, walk by that house, walk by the next house, and then he's that very next house. So three houses.
And he can do that as well. All conditions...
Shane, Shane, this is, this is, we don't yell from the audience. If you want to come up and you want to address the council, you can do that. Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Sure, so that, this is just one of the phases. I can show you here, this is, this is all of the, all of the phases together, but you might have to zoom out a little bit, whoever's, sorry. have to zoom out a little bit, whoever's, sorry. So essentially, the, these, this one will start, stage 2A, this one will come on after that, and then stage 2C, all of that will be closed at once. Our plan is for any one of these stages not to be closed for two to four months, but six to eight weeks. That is the plan. Now, to, to address Brad Morford's question, yes, you know, we saw it on Giles, Kevin.
And 28th.
We had, we had the, well, yeah, 28th wasn't because of rain, that was because.
Yeah, it was rain.
Yeah, it was rain and it was, we had some issues with the subgrade there. We run into things that are unexpected, but in July of this year, we had the wettest, the wettest year on record. So comparing that to what it typically is is probably not a fair comparison, but six to eight weeks is per stage is what we're planning on.
Not from the audience, you need to come forward.
Brian, if anybody needs to make a comment, please, we're not gonna start yelling stuff from the audience. That's, that's not the kind of counsel that we are.
We had several.
Come up if you want to talk, Mr. Tomuski.
We had several folks say two to four months. Help us understand where they're getting two to four months from.
I don't have any idea. That didn't come from our office.
What do you project?
Well, but six, six to eight weeks.
Six to eight weeks per stage.
That's two months.
Six to eight weeks, that's a month and a half to two months.
Right. And then if you get bad weather.
Yeah. Kevin, yeah. You're absolutely right.
So.
There's just no guarantee for, of six to eight weeks. It could be longer.
Okay. So have we ever done anything like what they're asking for, where we pour some temporary drive or something or put down?
Yes, we have done this in a lot of different locations. The difference between this location and places we've done it is the amount of right-of-way that we have to build it. There's just, there's only 66 feet of right-of-way and the, especially the stage in front of the McClinton household, we have a storm sewer that's very deep. It's going to take almost the entire width of the right-of-way just to build that storm sewer. There's no safe way to get vehicular access within our right-of-way during the project in that area.
So you're saying if we didn't have the situation, we could, we could accommodate this?
If we had, if we had more right-of-way.
If we had more right-of-way.
We don't have enough right-of-way.
But you did say the side, go back to that other drawing, please. So you did say the sidewalk, which is the dark maroon area, is staying, correct?
Correct.
So you've got that much right-of-way?
Four feet.
And anything back towards the houses?
That's not right-of-way. It's temporary construction easement.
Okay. Now, what I, what I suggested at and was obviously dismissed at the Public Works Subcommittee meeting was, because we did this up in Johnson when I was with the foe with engineering and had a very similar project on 62nd going east up to Merle, or east from Merle Hay. They poured gravel driveway to driveway and got people in. So I don't know why we couldn't do the exact same thing here. You're using four foot of the sidewalk, why couldn't you take another eight feet or another four feet to make eight feet for one car to get down? Why, why can't you do that? Because I was dismissed at Public Works Subcommittee because I asked you to go out and meet with all of the residents and I never heard anything back. So why can't this be done? Because what I talked about down and you had mentioned that, well, it's not, it's not right-of-way, it's easement, this and that. What I suggested was we do the same thing that we've done down in Valley Junction with the alleys, where we get a letter of agreement, there's no money exchanged, and we get a letter of agreement that the city can get onto that private property to do the improvements to the alley. Why can't we do the same thing here? And I never heard anything back.
It can physically be done.
Thank you.
But what you have here is that we'd have to reopen the right-of-way negotiations?
No, I'm not talking right-of-way. I'm talking about a letter of agreement because there is no right-of-way being obtained in the alleys for Valley Junction. Am I correct, Jessica? No right-of-way being?
I didn't work on that project.
Tom, you know this, we're not getting right-of-way.
In Valley Junction alley projects?
We're not getting right-of-way, we're getting letters of agreement to get onto that private property.
For the contractors to use the property.
Okay.
Not the adjacent property, not to trespass on other people's property.
You got the contractor trespassing on private property. That's what I talked about at the Public Works Subcommittee. They are not the property owners. I don't care if they're the contractors, but if you've got all the residents agreeing to this and they sign the hold harmless or whatever it takes, why can't we take another four feet and make a one-lane road up there?
Why can't the residents get together and do that themselves?
Because how are they, first of all, you're expecting them to drive through grass, which turns into mud, in case you don't know that, when it rains. Okay? So then you're saying, well, then they have to bring in gravel. How are they gonna bring in the gravel? How are they gonna remove it? I think it's up to the city to not only look at this project, Russ, but everything going forward. Because just because you've done something one way in the past doesn't mean you have to keep making that same mistake over and over and over, because that's how we've always done it. That's the, the one thing that I hate ever hearing is, well, we've always done it that way. Okay? There are issues throughout the city. 28th Street would have been one of them. Just the topography, retaining wall, things like that, that this probably would not have worked. But when you've got flat ground like this and you've got property owners that are agreeing to let you come onto their property by four feet, I think it's the responsibility of the city to put this down. It can be done, it should be done. And again, I recognize the fact that it can't always be done, but I think we, as a city, need to, need to change the way we've done business and look at it and say, if we can do it and the residents agree to it, then by God, we're gonna do this because it's the right thing to do, not because, well, we've never done that before. It's time to look through a different lens, do things differently. And this is one of them that we truly can accomplish. There are other parts of Ashworth, this might not work as we go east and west. So be it. But at least we've looked at everything and made sure that it's either possible or not possible, whether the residents don't agree to it or the topography doesn't allow for it. But I think it's the responsibility of the city to do this. It's the right thing to do.
I guess my issue isn't, this is the way we've always done it, we're gonna keep doing it that way. My issue is how do we fairly and equitably apply this across the city? If we do it here, we should do it there, we should do it here, we should do it everywhere.
That's what I just said.
Yeah. And, and what I'm saying is that if we can't do that like that everywhere, I mean, we're gonna get other requests for the exact same thing.
I just said that, Russ. If we can't do it, then we can't do it.
But it sounds like, but it sounds like we can't do it here.
Yes, we can. Tell me that we can't do this. Why can't we get a letter of agreement with this construction easement from the property owners, just like we've done in Valley Junction? I don't care if it's, if it's the neighbors or if it's a contractor. If the residents agree to it and they release us with the hold harmless, just like Valley Junction alleys, why can't it be done?
Okay, so describe here on this map, what are you describing to be done?
You got your sidewalk. You come four feet back towards the houses.
Okay.
For, and that, put gravel down.
Okay.
And that makes an eight-foot lane to get a car or truck up. It's a one-way road, okay? Thank you, Brian. Okay? That goes up to the next driveway.
Okay, so.
And that's how they get in and out.
Okay, so where would the gravel be?
Between his line and the sidewalk.
I got this in the.
Oh, that would be the gravel.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That people would be able to then use.
The sidewalk and the gravel for their.
For their vehicles.
Yes.
Okay, the combination of the gravel and the sidewalk.
Yes.
Okay, to be able to turn into their driveway.
Right, because we're gonna come in and tear that up anyhow to do, put down new sidewalk or restore it because of the construction easement.
Can I?
Cost is not there, other than trucking gravel in and trucking it out. It's not that expensive.
Can I give you some legal basis parameters for your discussion?
Yeah, because Molly couldn't at the Subcommittee meeting and I've never heard anything about it.
Yes, why won't it work here?
It works in Valley Junction.
So just to give you a framework from looking at this from a legal perspective, what you are proposing, the first thing that Brian said is correct. It's not legally required, but it's also not legally prohibited. There are though things to consider if the council is going to go down this path. One of them, Russ has stated, which is the precedent that it'll set on future projects, which also could increase the cost of future condemnations if we start doing this. The other thing I want to say is that we could not legally condemn the property you are talking about.
I'm not talking.
There is no, I'm just making it clear for everybody. You may understand that, Kevin, just for everyone in the room, to put us on the clean playing field of what we know we can do and what we can't do. So legally, we could not condemn for the property that you are talking about because it is above what is minimally required to complete the project. Therefore, like you're saying, it would have to be voluntary on the part of the property owners. I do support Brian in that it is different in that what we did with the alleyways. You may disagree, which is fine.
Why is it different?
Because the contractor, the city getting the approval for a city hired contractor to go on somebody's property individually is different than the city getting a letter of understanding that anybody and everybody that's invited to my house throughout the entire part of this project is allowed to go on my property. That creates a liability for the city. So the city installing something on the property is going to create a liability for the city, so.
Okay, if I can interrupt, I'm not saying that this is for, Shane has a, is a party of 25 people at his house and everybody comes up that. I'm not saying this is for the property owners. There's, there's a way to enforce it. If they can enforce that there, and guarantee that there will not be one contractor, and I want to see that happen, not one contractor parking these parking stalls, then we can guarantee that there, that he won't be having all of his 25 guests come over and use that driveway.
I think it would be difficult to restrict that to only a list of number of people. Is it your, what, to what degree of relationship do you get to use this driveway is kind of where you're leading? Regardless of who's using it, it does create a liability for the city because we are installing something that people would be using and crossing over other individuals' properties. Therefore, if it is something that is determined, the path that we want to go forward by the council, legal would strongly recommend to try to defray some of that liability, I don't think you're ever going to eliminate it, is that we would require a hold harmless and indemnification.
Absolutely.
And as part of that.
Didn't they say that?
As part of that, we would require minimum insurance requirements because our contractors that we hire to do projects, we require that of them. So if they did anything wrong or if they damaged somebody's property, like in the alleyways you talked about, we knew that they were insured. We had an insurance certificate. We were held harmless for any damage that happened. Let's say two people start driving down the single-lane gravel driveway, one has to veer off and damages a tree or hits a person or they cause a car accident. There probably, most of the time, as everybody here knows, the city is often named in those lawsuits. So the indemnification is not a guarantee that the city would not be liable, it is just a level of protection. And when I say minimum insurance requirements, I mean the insurance requirements that we would require of any other company or business that we work with, which would require a lot of these homeowners to probably up their homeowner's insurance to get that or get a secondary policy. In addition to that, Brian, I know you, the, this, I'm not trying to say that we've always done it this way, but I think on every project, we use objective criteria to review what is access that we can provide and how much access that we can, you know, feasibly allow that is still safe. And so that is different on every project, because every project has its own factors. I'm, nothing that I'm saying is saying that you're legally prohibited from allowing this. I'm just trying to give you some framework by which what, making that decision, what that would put, that would put the city in the position of. What has been discussed is having the property owners just voluntarily do this on their own and coordinate it on their own, which kind of eliminates the city out of it.
It's not realistic.
If we want to, we can come back after and restore the area, but that, that does significantly reduce the liability because we're not installing something, we're not involved in having that created. And so if there is something that gets damaged above and beyond what is expected, then that would be between the property owners.
And I'm fine with that and it sounds like the property owners are okay with that.
I, I don't know that they're okay with bringing in gravel so they can get in and out. Again, I just, you're, you're talking about the sky is falling, the sky is falling, okay? First of all, people are not gonna be going up there 25 miles an hour, there's not gonna be a wreck, okay? I mean, I realize that from a lawyer's speak, you're looking worst-case scenario, the whole bit. The realistic, common sense approach to this is, do what we did in Valley Junction, get the agreement. If they don't agree to it, then it can't happen. And we put down the rock and we restore it.
How many, how many residents?
In this case, we're talking four. I don't know how many we're talking total.
Four.
She's asking how many total we're talking that are gonna be affected this way, just a rough number.
Well, there are eight.
But we got someone the other side too, so.
Seventeen, seventeen circles on here.
Okay.
When is there a situation, Kevin, that if we do this, that we're never, that we're not gonna do it again? We're gonna do it every single time.
I, we're gonna, we're going.
Every single time, there's never gonna be a situation.
We're gonna.
Going up on people's property that we can't keep going up on people's property and putting down gravel.
If they don't agree to it, it doesn't happen.
Do I need to buy you a hearing aid?
There's never going to be a time, Kevin, there's never gonna be a time where we're not gonna be able to do it.
Yes, there will. If the elevation and topography doesn't allow for it, it can't happen, okay? If there's a retaining wall, like on 28th Street, that wasn't realistic to make that happen.
That would be the only circumstance where we wouldn't do it.
No, I, no, there's, there are other situations that's gonna be arise that we, that we physically can't do it. And there'll be others that the neighbors are like, I've got access to mine, sucks to be you, and I'm not gonna agree to it, okay? That's gonna happen too. I just think that moving forward, we need to look at every possible way we can, especially with the weather that we've been having here this last few years. And 28th Street, Brian, was impacted by rain, okay? I, I heard from the residents a lot, trust me, okay? So we've had two years now that rain has impacted these construction projects. I guarantee you, this is not gonna get done in six to eight weeks. If it does, I'm gonna buy you the biggest steak dinner you've ever had, because it's not gonna happen. It's gonna get delayed and it's just gonna drag on. It might even be longer than four months. I hope not, but it might be. And I think if we can do this, it's what we need to do. And I don't see any reason that we can't do it.
Brian had a question about the future, because we've talked at length over the years about 19th to 22nd Streets. This is a very extensive project and everybody's, I mean, everybody's right in the sense that this absolutely sucks, but that street is, it needs, this needs to happen for a lot of reasons, right? My question is, and it's kind of, for the future, are we gonna have to do this between 22nd and 28th and then 28th to 35th and then 35th to 39th and then 39th? Or will it be much easier for those future situations?
We haven't, we haven't looked at those in detail, so I can't give you a, a firm answer one way or another.
I ask that because if this is going to be for every three road or five road segment, 35th to 39th, 39th to 42nd, 42nd all the way to 50th Street, if this is gonna be the situation for the next seven segments, the thing that we do tonight does make a difference going forward. And Kevin, I think you're right, every, every project is different. Russ, I think you're. Russ, I think you're right at the same time because we are setting some sort of precedent here, but sometimes it won't work, sometimes it will. So I, I think, and, and Brian, it's all right that you don't know the answer, but this is, this is a very extensive thing. Even if it's only four to six weeks, and let's say it's four weeks, it's a long time, it's still a month. So my wonder is, is how many more times are we going to be sitting here over the next five to seven years talking about this exact same thing? It's more of a rhetorical question than anything, but this does suck, yes.
It's not just Ashworth, it's every reconstruction project that we do. And, and the, the next projects that are coming up, uh, in your neighborhood for reconstruction, the, the right of ways are even narrower. And, and we just, there's just not enough room in the right of way to do this. And all of our direction, and I, and I get it, Kevin, all of our direction from legal has been, we can't, we, we can't go into other people's property to give people access across, across property, across private property. So that, that's the direction that we've gone. And, and the fact that we're not doing it here, it, it's, it's not that there's anything different with these folks. It's just that this, this project's just too narrow to fit it in. And that, that's, that's really what it comes down to.
If I may, just very quickly, I just, I'm sorry, Doug. This isn't a hypothetical that it will affect us in the future. This is a very likely, like almost certain it'll affect us in the future. We paid a price for property that the city bought, and that price was probably higher than we maybe should have paid or we wanted to pay. And it has been used against us ever since in that county, in that area, for any condemnation we have done. Doing this has that potential and, which is totally fine if that is what the council wants to take on. It is legally allowed, I just want to make it very clear, it is legally allowed to do what is being asked, but there just are the ramifications that you'll have to consider that we may deal with down the line.
And very realistically, very realistically.
What would that be?
Greg's question, I think we're going to expect to do this on every single project from here on out.
That is what, what Russ just said is that the, the, the basically ensuring vehicular access for every property that's getting condemned in any future construction project is very likely what's going to get asked, or additional compensation from individuals who don't have the vehicular access and some do. I don't, to be honest with you, I haven't done the condemnations on this, but I, I know not every property owner on this map, and very likely not every property owner in this room, has voluntarily agreed to provide the right of way. I don't know if you know that, Brian. So I know that there are some that we will have to condemn.
There's condemnation scheduled, there, none of them have occurred yet.
Yeah. And that is going to be a potential element to come up in that hearing that we will have to litigate.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I appreciate the passion from Councilman Trevillion and the homeowners. I don't like this any more than any of you do. I am very worried about the precedent in this sense. I know in my ward, there's a brand new development that the developers poured the streets incorrectly. And they're going to have to tear out the entire, I think it's four blocks, five blocks, all at once. Those people do not have access either. So I feel it, I can see this coming. I, I, my heart breaks for it, I appreciate the case, but I, I think the way staff has planned this, unfortunately, I think is actually really good. Parking there, and I'm thinking walking down three houses. The alternatives are not better, in my opinion. And so I, I, I think we got to go with, I'm, I'm going to go with the way it's written up here in the, in the, in the pinky. And I'd also like to, we've been talking about it for 45 minutes, I'd like to call a question on this item, so.
All right, let's take some last comments here from anybody that has them. Councilman, do you have any comments?
Okay, so I, I do.
Hit your mic, hit your mic.
If we, we would be pouring the gravel, is that correct? And if, if we go this route. And Kevin Sinaro, we would be pouring the gravel. Who would be taking it up?
We would.
Okay. And who would be replacing what's underneath that after gravel's been on?
We would do all of that.
We would, we would take on the responsibility of re, is it sodding or what, what is?
We would have to, we would have to put the rock down, get the rock back up. It'll be compacted, so we'll have to dig it out and, for better lack of word, fluff it up so that actually things can grow on it and maybe bring in other dirt. It's just when, after you drive on something like that, it's, it's going to be difficult to, to restore. So it, I mean, it, we're, we're going to be into it probably either way on this one, but I, I think the, from, from a construction standpoint, it's probably not a big deal and it's doable, like I, like I told Councilman Trevillion. But from a, a legal standpoint, that, I don't know that that, that's, that's the precedent that you have to decide if you want to, if you want to move forward with. So construction wise, you know, we can do, we could do about anything. It's the, it's the legal side. We just don't have enough room in the right of way. And that's usually where, like we have on Mill Civic Parkway right now, we have a driveway that, that accesses three homes. It's all within the city's right of way. And, and so we can, we can put that in, maintain it, keep it up. And, and in this case, it's, there's just not enough room.
All right, Councilman. With that in mind, I have just a question for that. So there'd be no way?
Are procedures? By Robert's rule and order, when the question's called for, that's when the vote gets taken.
Questions been called, please vote.
Does that require a second, Ryan, for the question to be called?
The motion, yeah, the motion has already been made.
Please vote.
Do you need clarification on what the motion was, or?
It was to, uh, stay the course, correct?
What was the, when Doug called the question, what happened after that? Just, I'm just wondering procedurally.
What we were, what we were voting on was it was a motion to proceed with the current construction access design on Ashworth Road from 19th through 23rd. So that was moved and it was seconded. That's what we're voting on. Proceed with the current construction access.
We're voting on whether or not the city will continue as planned without gravel or with gravel.
Correct.
I've lost some.
With, as, as the engineering department has outlined it, with the parking stalls there, it's that plan, not what Councilman Trevillion is talking about.
Ryan, I think Greg was trying to determine who seconded the motion to call to question.
Yes, that's what I was asking specifically.
Because it does have to be seconded.
That's what I was asking. I didn't hear a second, but if I didn't hear it.
It was already, it was already moved and seconded.
No, the call for question has to be seconded. I didn't hear a second.
Per Rule 16, the motion to call to question must be seconded and debate is not allowed.
Thank you, Jessica, that was my, that was my question.
So if there is a second, then.
Okay. I did not hear a second to that call to question.
No, I did not.
I did not hear that. All right, so we're going to continue on then with Councilman Hudson, we're going to go to Councilman McKinney, and then we're going to take the vote.
Councilman, thank you for the call for the question. I do want to wrap this up as well. I do agree, but a couple, a couple of questions. So Brian, just wanted to make sure, there'd be no way, like for creating an entire road there along there, it seems like if the neighbors were willing to like share driveway where you kind of drive across a little grass and then come around a driveway, then drive a little grass, and then come across the driveway. I can't speak to whether the neighbors would be willing to do that or not. I can't speak to that. But just for those like two little grassy areas, that's, there's just no way the city could put gravel down because if we put gravel down, that means we would have to remove the gravel. And that means we would have to fluff it up, so to speak. And then we would have to replant sod. And there'd be no way to just put gravel down and just leave it there because that would be a violation of, and that would be legal liability and all those things. Though, there's no way we could do that almost a half measure just for the winter or for the spring, just for that little gravel, da, 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 little gravel, da, 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 and just leave it at that forever and then let the residents figure out what to do with that. One, I don't want to do that, but I'm just asking.
Physically, yeah, that can all be done.
But from a liability standpoint, that's where Jessica's saying there would be a, potentially a liability, even if we had a hold harmless. If somebody tripped on the gravel, that would be more likely not a car accident. But somebody walked in on the gravel, it was uneven, they fell, they broke their ankle. They have a hold harmless, they sued the city, which is why Jessica was saying.
Yep.
We require them to get.
Thus, thus a half measure is really legally speaking, not something that we can do. If we did something after the fact, if there was a sod, that's easy. But the question is what we would do at the beginning of the project if that measure would work? And, and we really can't go halfway legally or liability speaking. Is that what I'm hearing from you, Jessica?
Yeah, legally, it's permissible.
Permissible, but liability wise, that's what I'm asking.
No, I don't, I think you're, I, the thought of going like a half, meeting them halfway.
Yes.
Is kind of where there's not really like an in-between legally.
Your liability or not? Thank you.
Okay, so, so when, when the city, if the city takes on the responsibility of installing what Councilman Trevillion has outlined, and I'd love to be able to get there, but the reality is if we do that, we have a responsibility to maintain it. We have a responsibility to whoever traverses on it. And I can appreciate that we try to draw analogies to what happened in Valley Junction. And frankly, I think we need to look at how it was done in Valley Junction because I don't know that it was actually documented as I understand it, and maybe in the best form. But there, at least, we know who the contractors are. Here, we have no idea who may go down that stretch. It may be a visitor to Shane and his family. It may be nobody that anyone knows that goes down that street. And they trip and fall, like the case we have in Valley Junction here recently where this person fell on the sidewalk and has a pretty substantial liability. That applies here too. So I'd love to be able to get to a, to a point where everybody could get access immediately, whenever they wanted, no matter the circumstance, and walk right outside and get in the car and drive away. I don't, what I know is we sat at Public Services Council Subcommittee and we sat there for a good hour and a half talking about this very issue in detail, just like we did tonight. And, and I was hopeful that as we concluded that meeting, we, we had talked as a group about is there an alternative path forward? Have we exhausted every single remedy under the sun that would be reasonable? Both reasonable from the resident's standpoints, reasonable from all other constituents and taxpayers. And we are here. I talked to, now, Brian, I mean, I mean, I received communication from Shane over the weekend, and I appreciate that, Shane. As a result of your communications, I spoke with Brian today. Brian, I'm just going to ask you here because I, we need to set the record straight for everyone. Is there anything more we could do without dramatically increasing the costs here?
No.
That's my concern. And my concern is also that I doubt that these residents want to substantially increase their premium for their home insurance because that, that insurer is not going to know how to underwrite the risk associated with how many people are going to be going down that path. And so there's going to be a premium they're going to pay to ensure against that risk. I'm also concerned about how this sets precedent going forward. I, I, I feel terrible that Shane, you and your family would not be able to get the exact access you want. I wish it was different. But we have spent so much time on Ashworth, and I actually commend my colleagues and your willingness to listen to me during the first two years of this debate where I was trying to figure out, should we be at 10 and a half, 10 and, 10, 11, 11, 11.2? What should the, you know, parking be? We spent a lot of time on this. I don't regret a second of it, and I appreciate, Brian, your patience through it. And now we're at this point here, I wish there was something more we could do. I'm hopeful that neighbors can be good neighbors, that, that residents can come together and find a solution. If there's a way for them to do that, and we can come in afterwards and clean up, you know, some grass and whatever it is that we need to do, I think we as a city could hopefully do that. The cost, we're going to be, we're going to be going into that same general area for purposes of restoration anyway. Uh, I just, I do not want the city, I do not want my, my fellow taxpayers to take on that liability of whoever's going to traverse down this gravel roadway we put in for however long it may be, they're going to be on the hook. So if we can come in after the fact and help, help address some restoration, I'm all on board. But unless and until we can eliminate the liability, and I'm hearing from legal that we can't, I don't know how we're going to do this without either creating liability for us or substantial cost for the residents. So I, I wish there was a path.
I've got one last question. People have brought up, um, liability. So what is the liability to, that we're imposing on the residents versus the liability of the city? So there's been talk about that, oh, if, if, again, if Shane's got a party of 25 coming over and we don't know who's going to drive up and down there, and if there's going to be a head-on collision because two cars are coming at the same time, what about the fact that there is another option? We choose not to do it. We force these people to walk, I don't know, 150 yards, whatever it might be, in all kinds of weather. Somebody falls, the brakes hip, whatever it might be, what's our liability then?
I mean, I can't tell you.
What is our liability then?
Exactly what the liability is, what I can tell you is because it's not legally required to provide the vehicular access that you're stating, then the city very likely would not, would have a defense to having somebody walking. And also, like Brian stated, we're actually providing a higher level of access, pedestrian access than required. I think Brian and I had this conversation. It's not required by code to require ADA compliant pedestrian access, but that's what we're doing above and beyond. Unfortunately, I don't know why it's not required, but it isn't. Um, and so having that access, as long as we are maintaining that pedestrian access and are in, you know, a, a good condition, if we didn't do that, there might be some liability. But if we're, if we're maintaining our, the access points, I don't see how, I, I don't think the liability would be high in the potential, the potential risk to the city.
Even though you've got all that construction equipment working out there? And people are talking about, you know, the restoration. Guys, this is all going to be disturbed anyhow because it's construction easement. What that means is up to that line, the construction equipment can be up there. All of that's going to be destroyed, all the grass, everything. It's all going to get put back. The sidewalk, the grass, all of it, it's going back. Whether we put gravel down or not, it's all going to get replaced because it's a construction easement. It's either going to be dirt piled up there or, or whatever it might be. So that's not even a part of this. Can you put the picture back up?
Oh, sorry.
Brian, how much of the sidewalk is in the construction easement?
What I'm saying, Renee, is that everything in the orange area through here, it's all, this is all going to get disturbed because you got, you got, uh, construction easement that goes up that far. That's why Brian says we can't, that's why Brian says we can't come up with the black line he drew in because that's just construction easement, not, not new right of way. But it's construction easement. So with construction easement, there's going to be disruption to that.
Brian, well, those driveways, like all the way down, I know it's a graphic reproduction of what might happen. I'm just looking right here. Does it really extend all the way down to where that red line ends? I'm just looking at, um, I mean, I'm looking at Shane's house right now. Does that driveway reconstruction pretty much go almost up to his garage?
Probably, yes.
Okay. And so, so that means, is the construction easement including that sidewalk?
Yes.
Does that mean construction equipment can park?
No, the, the sidewalk is in the public right of way currently.
Okay.
But not in the construction easement.
Will construction equipment ever be parked on or near that sidewalk?
Yes.
Which is the walking path that people are supposed to use?
Well, not, not when they are using it as the walking path. All the work is going to be done between the sidewalk, between the sidewalks. So when this, when that work is done, then we'll come in and we'll replace the sidewalks.
Brian, the temporary sidewalk that we're installing, is that the only piece besides the actual where the construction's going to occur that is going to disturb the grass areas in between the driveways?
That's all permanent concrete, right?
Or is there going to be?
You said you, that is the sidewalk that's remaining there in front of Shane's house, right? The purplish area, that's the concrete that's staying, right? Up here, up here at the other one where it says temporary modular sidewalk, that's the, the temporary sidewalk. This is permanent sidewalk that's there today.
It's not permanent, I mean, it's sidewalk that's there today that'll get torn out and rebuilt.
But I mean, it's concrete.
Correct.
So it would not be, to put in the gravel would actually be additional disturbance in addition to where the construction will occur a little bit? Is it unknown?
Potentially.
Okay.
But it's still within the construction easement.
I would say with that, that area is probably going to get disturbed anyway. So from a dollar for dollar, we probably wouldn't put the rock down if this wasn't something we were going to do, so that that's an expense. But it would get, it would get driven over, it would get disturbed, it would get, need to get restored. So I'm not disagreeing with everything Kevin's saying. I mean, he's, he's correct on, on, on some counts. It's just the legal liability side of it is, is the part that I think has given everybody pause, gives me pause.
If, if people try to drive over that, like and do, if, let's say there's no gravel road there. If people drive over that, obviously that's going to damage the grass. They drive up, they do their own thing, they drive over the grass again, they do it again. Two questions. Number one, does the city want to stop that behavior from occurring? Do we care?
About driving on grass?
Yeah. On their, well, it's in the easement still.
I mean.
Do we care? Do we care? And if we don't care, fine. Number two, if it is in the construction easement, will all that stuff be replaced anyway? And we'll be making a right, that's my question.
The stuff that's in the construction easement, if it's disturbed, it will get replaced.
All right.
The first question, it's more of a, I don't, I don't know if, I don't know the answer to that one.
We wouldn't prohibit anyone from doing that.
No.
So long as it doesn't impact our ability to complete our project?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't think you can park on the grass either, if I'm not mistaken.
Can you drive on the driveway?
Okay, is there any discussion before we vote? Okay, with that, please vote.
Four yes, one no.
Okay, moving on, item 7B, we've got approval of traffic code amendment through street, stops required, South 91st Street, Bridgewood Boulevard to Mill Civic Parkway, got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to approve, please.
Okay, someone want to second it?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Does anybody in the audience want to address the council on item 7B? Anybody online want to address the council on item 7B? Okay, is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Five yes, North Amendment to City Code, the city of West Monmouth, 2024, by many provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
And since that first motion was to consider the first reading, this will be the motion to approve the first reading.
And this is a second of the motion.
All right.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item 7C, we've got approval of traffic code amendment, special stops required, South ADA Street and Stagecoach Drive, 63rd Street and Center Street, Maple Mall Drive and Belmar Drive, Mark Court Lane, we've got an ordinance for approval of the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded, is there anybody in the audience who are online who would like to address the council on item 7C? Okay, is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, please vote.
Five yes, North Amendment to City Code, the city of West Monmouth, 2024, by many provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
I'm sorry, the first reading.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item eight, receive file and/or refer, we've got nothing to receive file or refer. Item nine, other matters, are there any other matters that any council person would like to bring up for the good of the order at this time?
Yeah, I just want to share one thing.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
I know the gentleman in the audience is not here anymore, but the question was posed, what would I do in the circumstance? I'll be blunt, I would, I would talk to my neighbors, and it's a 12-foot grass, I would drive across the grass, and I, and knowing that those areas would be restored, and I would ask my neighbors, I would drive across the grass, I would use the driveway, I would drive across the grass again, and I would use their driveway, because we as neighbors look out for each other in that way, and it seems like those neighbors are doing that as well. So that's what I would do under the circumstance. It sucks, and I know I voted yes, and I'm thinking about the future and future projects. I think, I think everyone made some really good points. Mr. Mary, you make a good point about setting precedents. Kevin, you makes a really good point about trying to do the best for our residents, and it's a tough balance to do, but I just wanted to share very, very bluntly what I would do. So if I knew my area was going to be restored anyway, I would drive across the grass, do the loop, drive across the grass again, and it, that would just be my six to eight weeks, hopefully not longer, hopefully sooner. So I just wanted to share that piece.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any, anybody else for the good of the order? Okay, hearing none, we're adjourned.
Well, this was a tough meeting.